Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Today is December 20, 2017. It is 4:30 sharp. And we shall begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, please stand and join. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now, Ange, may I please have a roll call? Brad Hints. Randy Funkert.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Greg Gills.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
Here.
Thank you. First on the agenda, public comments. Are there any public comments? Okay, Mr. Public, thank you for being here. Color looks great on you. Since there are no public comments, we will go into the consent agenda. The fire applicants are Doug Rogers and Christian Howard. I can give you spelling later, but it's just how it sounds. Christian Howard and Doug Rogers. And the appointment to the Crossroads Pavilion Board to replace Zach would be Tom Eggers. Are there any questions, comments, or dissent about the consent agenda? And if not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Beat you to it. Thank you. May I have a roll call, please? Funkert.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hints.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we will now open the public hearing. And this is in consideration of resolution to approve the preliminary and final plat of Floyd Industrial Park. At this time, the public hearing is open. Are there any public comments? And anything received in writing? Okay. Do we have a motion, then, to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Close.
Thank you. Thank you. A roll call to close the public hearing? Gills.
Aye.
Hints.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you. And then we need a motion to approve resolution to approve the preliminary and final plat of Floyd Industrial Park.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Take your bid. You got it? Okay, good. If there is no discussion, a roll call, please. Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hints.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Number four.
Quick follow-up question on that.
Yes, thank you.
When is the bid happening on Floyd Infrastructure?
That is, we haven't gotten to that timeline yet. Probably in the February to March time.
For bid letting, yes?
Did I have a discussion to make? No.
Okay. Well, then, we're on track, so good.
It would not be before that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four on the agenda, we need to set the date and time for a public hearing. And this is to amend the zoning ordinance. This is to clear up some of the language to determine it as single because we do not have that determined. Correct. Thank you. Any further explanation on that information that was provided to you? That date is going to be January 3, 2018. At 4:30 in the afternoon, 2018. It's crazy. Do we have a motion to approve this setting date and time for the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please? Funkert.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hints.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is that being published Saturday?
We could, it's the 7:20 you said?
Yeah.
So I'd need it by Friday to get it in next Wednesday. If we did next Wednesday, that was seven.
Okay. That's our single. I got that one. Number five on the agenda is setting the date and time for a public hearing to amend the budget. Again, that date will be January 3, 2018, at 4:30 in the afternoon. Do we have a motion to approve setting this date and time?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. A roll call, please. Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hints.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Thank you. And now, number six on the agenda, we have a consideration of approval of a contract for development with the SCDC. I've asked Sean or Kurt if they would care to elaborate. I know you guys have been working diligently, along with Mike, on getting that together. Let me pull mine out.
I would note, Mayor, that this is consistent with the letter of intent. It was previously presented to the city with, obviously, additional protection and detail. But it is consistent with the letter of intent.
Wonderful. Would either of you like to walk us through this? Or do we need further explanation? Maybe for media purposes, walk through our contract agreement. Touch base on it. Either one of you want to do that?
Part of the urban renewal plan was the SCDC acquiring additional commercial industrial ground. The SCDC is purchasing the ground. It's being reimbursed through Tiff financing for that purchase. The SCDC will then sell the, develop the land, sell the land market as they have in other subdivisions historically. And this just sets forth the requirements in the agreements that, like I had mentioned, were in the letter of intent that was distributed a couple of months back, all in reference to the purchase of the grant strip property itself. So this just memorializes the agreement.
Thank you. Questions at all? Counsel?
And your position of this, along with SCDC's execution of it, are, would be a contingency to the finalization of the purchase of ground on January 2.
And that, yes, that closing is January 2. Thank you.
It's my understanding that SCDC will be taking a look at this for final action on the 28th of December.
SCDC will?
Yeah, SCDC will be reviewing the same contract on the 28th at a special meeting, too, to consider it as well for approval.
I don't know if there are any questions, if everybody's had the chance to read through. I am not opposed to, I mean, are we ready to move forward with this? I want to check.
I assume that this is something we have historically done in the past.
Yeah, we have used-
Revolutionary about this.
Contract for developments consistently in many development projects. The format and substance here may be a little bit novel in the sense that we've changed some of the written documents. But this, in many ways, mirrors the contract that was developed for the Kent Nutrition and Deluxe Project, just tailored it to this particular matter. So it's, it's passed the scrutiny of many eyes already.
Wonderful.
So then, I assume that for each development that we do, we need a new contract?
Correct. And that's actually addressed in here.
Well, then, I see why we can't move forward with this.
All right. And I'm fine with moving forward, too. I just wanted to make sure everybody had ample time to be able to read through. And if there was any questions, that they would have time to pose those questions. That was all. So if we're comfortable and all is well, and I would, I'm feeling fine with it. I just want to make sure counsel is, are we ready to make a motion, then, to approve this contract?
I would move that we approve this contract.
Thank you, Pete. Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, Zach. If there is no discussion and no questions, I will take a roll call. But with that said, if any questions come up between now and then, please reach out to, for clarification purposes or whatever, reach out to either Sean or Kurt. Now, may I have a roll call? Hints.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you. Number seven on the agenda, and, Mike, I have a question. Do we need to consider the resolution and then also approve the use? Or is this all in one action, number seven?
The resolution actually tackles multiple things, including declaring the surplus.
Okay.
Authorizing the transfer of the surplus to the Capital Improvement Fund. And then, from there, using the $400,000 surplus, which would then be in the Capital Improvement Fund, for lending purposes to make the contract for development work.
Thank you.
So you approve one resolution to do multiple things.
And by way of explanation, the contract for development contemplates that the city will provide $400,000 of funds
towards the purchase price of the business park property. It would be backed by a note that would be payable within a 30-day window. And if the city desires, it can also take out a mortgage on the ground to secure that obligation. And if you recall, this body previously approved the issuance of Tiff bonds, which will supply the funds for a grant of approximately $1.2, $1.25 million. And then, after closing, that grant would then go back to SCDC, at which point SCDC would pay off its note.
Wonderful. That's all spelled out in this page in a quarter resolution.
This is the paper trail to make that happen.
There was multiple actions, or if it was all under just one.
It's shown up as multiple because I advised the city clerk to show it that way. And then, after our phone call, I put it all in one resolution.
Okay. Thank you very much for simplifying that for us. We appreciate it. Counsel, the resolution that was placed before you, do you have any questions? Comments, concerns? If not, do we have a motion to approve by resolution? The declaration of a surplus and transfer of that surplus to the 2017 Capital Improvement Fund.
I'll make motion to approve the resolution.
Support.
Thank you. Last request for any comments, clarification, discussion. Micah, thank you very much for walking us through that. May I have a roll call, please? Funkert.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hints.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Wonderful. Number eight is the consideration of pay estimate number 13 on the Crossroads Pavilion. This pay estimate is in the amount of $103,989.84. Any questions? Clarification that might be needed? If not, do we have a motion to approve? Todd, did you want to share anything?
Nope. Just ready in case there was questions.
See? Good thing you got that, Mike.
Punch List is all taken care of. Everything is done.
Yep. There's some warranty issues that we're going to address in the spring. But that doesn't stop us from approving and paying the contract because there's surety bond and more. So, not warranty deed, but warranty clause in the contract. And that's just on some, some cracking in the parking lot. And I actually agree with the contractor that it's in our best interest to wait till spring, let it winter, and then they address all of them at once. And that'll be as simple as some routing and sealing.
Sure.
And it's minor. It's not a big deal by any means. But it's their duty to seal them. We just as well have them sealed.
All the closeouts, cementals, and all that business is taken care of.
That is correct.
Okay.
Everything meets standards and satisfied with everything?
I am. And to the best of my knowledge, it all meets standards. That's, nobody's told me that it's not. And I haven't reviewed every document. But that's part of what our consultant is supposed to do for us as well.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to a pay, to approve pay estimate number 13?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Just making sure, no questions? And a roll call, please? Hints.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Number nine, pay estimate number 14. And this is the final pay on Crossroads Pavilion. This is in the amount of $85,074.90. This does include the electrical work that we had finished?
That's correct. This actually includes all of Change Order 3, which was approved by counsel at an earlier meeting. But the payments are all in this estimate.
Okay.
If anybody doesn't remember what Change Order 3 was, I can tell you.
So moved to approve.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns?
Power upgrades all done? Everything's fine?
Yes. I mean, we haven't, we haven't plugged into the large amperage circuit, I guess. But it's, it's completed. It's supposed to be there and ready to go.
Trench should be seated in the spring, then, or?
What's that?
The trench.
Yeah, that'll be on us. I mean, that was not part of their bid. But yeah, we'll have to clean that up in the spring. It needs to settle, anyway.
Looks nice, that monument. I mean, given. Turned out pretty good.
What was the total that the engineer helped out on the electrical?
So that's $2,200, and that is withheld?
That's withheld from his contract, not this contract.
Correct. Exactly.
Separate contracts.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. We had some discussion, correct? I'll make sure I stay up to speed. Any other discussion, then? All right, thank you, gentlemen. And may I have a roll call, please? Sawyer.
Aye.
Hints.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you. Then, number 10, review and approve the federal fiscal year 2019 Capital Improvement Project application package for the Shell Municipal Airport. And Sean has provided that information before us here. I need to get to that.
So you'll note in, in fiscal year 19, there's a rather large project. And that comes in the way of runway repairs. There's some slight ponding that's occurring on the runway. And that's considered a safety concern. It has been elevated up. Runway repair was scheduled to be out a couple of years from, from 19. But they wanted to try to acquire funding on the federal side and move that project up to fiscal year 19. They're looking at doing a topographical survey to establish the depth of the concrete of the runway to see if they're able to actually mill the pavement and be able to get the water to shed away and correct the ponding issue. That would be at a fraction of the cost. But in order to get the project in, in the federal queue, it's a lot easier to revise a project downward if we're able to do the mill and overlay in those particular areas versus overlaying the entire runway. They're not sure if they'll be able to acquire the federal funding in fiscal year 19 or not because they're moving this, this particular project up. But if they do, if the federal government does come, come up with, with their 90% of the project, then we would take this project on in fiscal year 19. So our, our total cost would be $150,000. But again, we will, we are due diligence to see if we can come up with, with a modified repair to, to this project.
So what we need to do is just approve, simply approve, not just their capital improvement plan?
Yes. So annually, this is reviewed by the city council? Because you're looking at, at tying up federal funding going on a number of years. So they just want to make sure that it was reviewed and approved by the city council. So then, they can set their priorities at the state federal level.
And then, because capital improvement plan, similar to us, it doesn't mean that's for sure that's going to happen. It's just a budgeting tool for them for projecting future plans. Correct?
Correct. Now, because it's going through both the state and the federal government, as long as they can come up with their portion of funds, they'll expect the city to be able to do the same.
So how much are we going to have to think about for the year 2019, again?
$150,000, which is 10% of the total cost. Again, if we're able to, to do a, a mill to get water to shed off, that would be at a fraction of the cost. So does work with, I would get some of the 40?
I would move to approve this federal plan, capital improvement project plan.
Thank you. Just seeing if anybody has any questions as we're reading through it. Any further, any questions at all? Any further discussion? All right. Then may I have a roll call, please? Sawyer.
Aye.
Hints.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Funkert. Number 11 now on our agenda is staff reports for November. Are we flipping a coin to see who goes first? Okay. Isn't that nice of you? Thank you.
In November, we handled 208 calls for service. Again, as described before, that covers a wide variety of different types of calls. We made 15 arrests for a variety of things as well. We made a total of 60 traffic stops. We handled seven accidents. Six were property damage. One was a personal injury accident. We're enjoying the winter, obviously. I would anticipate that number could go up drastically.
Sure.
We issued a total of 41 either citations or criminal charges. And then, we handled 22 different incident reports.
Your 208 calls, is that just calls into 911, or is that?
Calls, calls for service include a wide variety of things. It can be somebody calling to complain about a neighbor's dog barking. It could be somebody calling about a neighbor kid. Yeah, it's a wide variety of things.
Right. So that 208 is just a little bit of everything, including many 911 that you might get to.
Yep. That's correct.
All right. Thank you. Todd?
We worked.
Shorter and sweeter.
Water flows both ways.
Yeah.
All right. November, pretty little of the East 9th Street sewer issue, which we actually discussed at the November meeting. But Water Department, we average 760,000 gallons a day. That's pretty normal for this time of year. Outside of that, the daily duties, the guy spent a lot of time installing SmartPoints or the radio reads, which we do to improve reading efficiency. And AGP, those kind of places, manufacturing-type places. Wastewater, we averaged 952,000. So obviously, we had some I&amp;I during the month. We worked on the East 9th project. We had to replace a motor. The 330th lift station upgrade was done. So we now have, we upsized one of the pumps at the 330th lift station to help handle higher flows. So that project got completed. We sent Nate White to get some training and get his required ZUs done. We did a fair amount of potholeing on the wastewater yard, locating old pipes and stuff. This should help improve some efficiencies in the contract for the new wastewater treatment plant because we verified some size and depths of, of stuff on our yard. So there hopefully won't be surprises for the contractor when that other project comes on. We did some help. They helped, actually, Water Department installing some of the radio reads. And they also had a guy spend a, a good chunk of the month helping the street department jet sewers, which is just part of a yearly maintenance program. Street Department, same thing. They had a guy jetting sewers. Did a lot of man-hours on East 9th Street. Stalled the solar light and landscaping on the east sign and west sign, New Sheldon signs. We did some ditch cleaning. We fixed a few potholes, too. Other than the normal daily stuff, that's, and it covers most of the extras.
Wonderful.
Waste water, that still plant?
Yeah. Yeah. We are looking at a February 21st opening. And I guess why we're talking about upcoming projects, 16th Street, we are still on target for an April 17th opening.
Nice.
I have a question on the East 9th Street. I saw some of the disbursements for the concrete work, sand and gravel and whatnot. How does that affect, I mean, what, do you put projects on hold because that, what that does? Or what does that do to your budget for the year?
Well, it destroys it.
Yeah.
Yeah. What we did is, is we budget, there's a line item in his budget of $25,000 every year for I&amp;I infiltration repair. We hadn't completed any of that this year, this budget year yet. So we will not be doing that. And then, we also depleted the emergency repair line item. And then, what's left, we're going to just try to absorb.
What was the total price tag on that?
To be honest with you, I didn't total up each and every bill. But it had to been 40, right?
Because there was, there was something paid out of infiltration already. But I think we only went over the emergency by a couple thousand dollars.
Okay. So it would have been right at 40, then. Because those two together have, have a grand total, I believe, of $40,000 of them. And I believe we'd spent about $3,000 out of I&amp;I already. We had bought some rings and covers. We raised some manholes, actually, out in the ditch in the Crossroads Industrial Park. So we had bought some of that product. So if we only went over by a couple thousand, it'd been right at.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, but before we do this, I would like to, first of all, because I'm sure many of you won't come back afterwards, maybe you will. I'd like to thank Randy Funkert and Zach Sawyer for your four years of service on the council and to our community. Hate to see you leave, but very glad for the opportunity to work with you and for you to be a part of the city and, and all the wonderful things we've done in the past four years and the many years that are coming up. So thank you. And even though you will not serve as councilman, we have plenty of seats for you to come in and, and join us the first and third Wednesdays of the month at 4:30 for public comments, if you would. You will be missed, and we do thank you very much, seriously. What you doing on Tuesdays at noon? What day of the week? So we thank you. We wish you the best. But we know you'll still be around. And we appreciate all you've done. Also, Merry Christmas to all of those. And with that said, the new website is up and running. Looks great. Thank you. I was checking that out. Are you really going to put profile pictures of us on there?
That's up to you guys.
Okay.
Yours is up there. Ours is up.
Yours is up?
SCDC has them up.
Put a stick figure. All right. So, and that looks great. It was a-
Turned out nice.
Turned out very nice. So it was worth the wait. So thank you to all the efforts under that, too. And now, number 12 on the agenda is possibly going into closed session for the city manager's evaluation. Sean, is that something you want to do, to go into a closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
Then, may I have a-
Just one quote. Do we have any, are we going to do comments after that? Or do you want to do those?
Well, okay, let's do your comments now because I don't know who sticks around. So go ahead.
I'm just, the other night, I thought it was gunfire at first. But I think it was probably fireworks the other night.
Oh, yeah.
I think they were pushing the limit a little bit as far as doing it. We are going to be having fireworks over Christmas. I don't know what the dates are exactly.
Can you remind us of the dates, Lyle? Do you have that off the top of your head?
I've had some calls, December 17th through January 2nd.
So we're good, December 17th through the 2nd.
Yeah, they can shoot until 10:00, other than New Year's Eve, which is 12:30.
Thank you.
That's something that we might look at. I noticed that Sioux City really drastically reduced their-
They had some major problems, house fires and, mm-hmm.
I guess my only comment would be, have your fun, but be a good neighbor at the same time, as far as citizens of the community.
Yeah, and it is a dry season, so.
Was it a big break?
Okay. 2:03 AM. Thank you for bringing it up, because I have had a few phone calls. People were purchasing them and then saying, when I come back to town, can I shoot them off? So I did go check.
And then one other question I have.
Yes.
Two, last month, we had that contract for the, the shed for the snowplow, and there was, I had asked about, the contract administration was listed as not included. Didn't we ever get resolution on that?
Yes. So you have the contract for engineering, and you'll actually have a construction contract that'll come forward as well.
So this was an engineering contract, not the construction contract?
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense. All right.
All right, any other comments, then, before? Did you get them on public records, because I don't know?
I would like to take a minute and thank each and every one of you. It has been a joy to work with you, city staff, fellow councilmen. Mica thoroughly enjoyed my four years here. To the citizens of Sheldon, it's been a pleasure serving you. Again, I thoroughly enjoyed it, and hopefully someday down the road, I get the opportunity again.
That'd be nice.
Everybody, thank you.
Comments this way?
Zach took the words right out of your mouth.
Dang, Zach.
No, I just, I want to thank everybody, too, the staff, fellow council members, Mica and Sean, and it's been, it's been a pleasure, and I'll miss it, but, you know, down the road, you never know.
Right. Well, you know where we're at, so.
That's right.
Who knows? I mean, take a little break for you, it's great time.
We'll show our partner back.
Let me get out all the committees that we're lacking on, right?
I, I hope you fill that position.
You'll put the word out for us, right? Thank you. Any other comments, then, before we go out, or into? Okay, thank you. So do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you, and a roll call?
Kent.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you. You're welcome to hang out. We can come and-
Three of us would vote in favor of not adjourn. We have to stay here again.
Wouldn't that be interesting?
I do hope I don't pause that. I guess we'll find out when we're on show.
Better preview it.
Okay, it is 6:22, and we are now out of closed session. Mayor's statement on evaluation is, Sean is meeting expectations. He will receive a $1,250 salary increase. And now, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.